All set, Warden, ready when you are.
All right, thank you very much. And welcome, everyone, to our meeting this evening. First, I want to start by acknowledging that we certainly didn't have a closed meeting scheduled for today. And give it an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Again, things are still pretty grim in the world today. And certainly, let's keep Ukraine in our minds as we take a moment to reflect. And then afterwards, please stand for the singing of "Oh, Canada." All right, we'd like to begin with our land acknowledgement. This evening, we begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Three Fires Confederacy of First Nations comprised by the Ojibwe, Ottawa, and the Potawatomi peoples. To recognize the land as an expression of gratitude to those whose territory we reside on in a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on the land from time immemorial. We value the significant historical and contemporary contributions of local and regional First Nations and all of the original peoples of Turtle Island. It's a recording of attendance. All members of council are present. And with that, if I could have an adoption of the regular meeting minutes. Deputy Mayor Chris Malash moves, supported by Mayor DeCarlo. On those minutes, any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor. Suppose, if any, that is carried. Thank you. All right, we have a delegation this afternoon, members of council. And if we could have a motion to move that the delegation from Windsor-Essex Ontario Health Team co-chairs be permitted to address county council this evening. Mayor Bain, Mayor Bondi, all in favor. Suppose, if any, that's carried. And so it gives me a pleasure to introduce our co-chairs. Our chief of EMS services, Bruce Crowder, and Claudia DeBoer. And also Kristin Kennedy to provide county council with information on the recently approved Windsor-Essex Ontario Health Team. So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
I don't know who's going to start. Claudia, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Warden McNamara and council members. It's my pleasure to bring you an update on the Windsor-Essex Ontario Health Team. And I'm joined today by my fellow new co-chair, incoming co-chair, Kristin Kennedy. I think I see her on here somewhere along the way. And because my term has come to an end. And then, of course, Chief Bruce Crowder, who has been my fellow co-chair over the last year and a bit. So I do have some slides, so I'm going to try and share my screen. Looks like it's disabled at the moment. Is it possible to get the screen share capability? Great, thank you. And hopefully, everybody can see that. So I really wanted to provide county council today with a bit of an indication of our journey that has been really almost three years now. And we are delighted that we were finally approved as a formal Ontario Health Team on February 10th by the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Health Christine Elliott. We had the pleasure of joining her for that announcement. And we were well on the way. We had submitted our application for approval. And we're making some tweaks based on some of the feedback that we got from the ministry. And then COVID hit. And needless to say, that actually required us to come together as a community in ways that we had never really worked together before. And I have to say, and I'm sure that Bruce and Kristin would agree with me, that that has actually helped us to break down some of the barriers and find some new ways to connect with one another as providers across the community. And that is really the intent of the Ontario Health Team strategy, is to find new ways to do a better job of connecting the health system and other partners and to provide a system that is more easily navigatable for our community. And one of the ways in which we really dug into this work as a result of the pandemic was an initiative that the ministry announced, which was identified as the High Priority Community Initiative. And what occurred here was an identification of a number of communities across the province that were being disproportionately impacted by COVID. And Windsor-Essex was identified as one of the... There were 16 altogether, I believe, and we were the last to be identified. And so what we were encouraged to do, or requested to do, was to think of new ways in which we could go into specific neighborhoods, because it had been identified right down to the postal code where there was a higher number of cases, a higher positivity rate, where we had lower testing rates. And so we actually came together as a community and developed a mobile clinic strategy and went into all of these communities on multiple occasions to provide vaccination, to provide testing where that might have been necessary, and to provide wraparound support such as referrals into mental health and addictions. We did some real-time primary care, because in some cases, individuals either didn't have a primary care provider or hadn't been to see their primary care provider for some time and needed in real-time support. And so this was actually a very successful strategy. And we had numerous community providers that came together to help support this work. This is an indication of some of the key postal codes where we brought the mobile clinics and all of these supports. And you can certainly see of note, Kingsville and Leamington are identified as such. And I will highlight that some of the really amazing work that happened in support of our temporary foreign workers was a big part of the High Priority Community work and will continue to be a priority going forward. So how this dovetails with the Ontario Health Team work is that it became really abundantly clear to us through COVID that these specific neighborhoods are really in need and continued need. And so we had the opportunity, because the ministry was encouraging us again to narrow our population of focus in terms of what we had submitted to them for approval. And so we thought, well, why not leverage something that's already working extremely well? And that we would build on this mobile clinic strategy to continue to provide education, wellness checks, primary care. We can look at identifying where individuals are behind in their cancer screening. We can, you know, bring a number of key supports right into neighborhoods where there, you know, have our populations that are more vulnerable and at risk and perhaps not rostered with primary care or certainly underserviced populations. And so this is what we actually submitted to the ministry in the last, well, probably 10 months. And this strategy very much aligned with the ministry and Ontario Health mandates of wanting to increase overall access to preventative care and primary care as well as mental health and addiction services and to improve overall access to care in the most appropriate setting. And as well, you know, increase overall access to surgeries and procedures and diagnostic services that, of course, have been, you know, certainly for significant periods during the pandemic, were not occurring. And so we believe that it was actually based on this strategy and the success of our work during COVID that the ministry actually provided us with our approval to go forward. And we will be funded now that we are approved. Unfortunately, because we were late to the party, we have about $200,000 that we need to spend within the next two and a half weeks. And however, for 2022-2023, we will have some significant implementation funding that we will use to bring this strategy to fruition. We are not able to use this funding for the actual direct service care. But because we've had and built such tremendous partnerships across the community, we know that there will be some in-kind services provided by a number of partners. And I can tell you that Erie Shores Healthcare and Essex-Windsor EMS and the Windsor-Essex Community Health Centre and the Health Unit. I mean, we've just had a tremendous response and we know that we'll be able to count on that going forward. One of the key assets, and I know Chief Crowder will be bringing you a separate report on this a bit later in your agenda today. But one of the key assets that we want to utilize is actually having a large mobile clinic. Without this particular asset, we are pretty much limited to whatever permanent locations, whether they're health, community health centers, or schools. We are often looking for places where we can set up in some of these neighborhoods. And certainly, in the summer, what it entailed was actually setting up tents and really having something that required considerable setup and take-down every day. And so this is a clinic that we are going to be able to purchase with some of the High Priority Community funding. And so we're kind of leveraging two funding streams to hopefully make the work of our Ontario Health Team just a little bit more efficient going forward. And so the next steps, we're here today and anticipating approval from county council for the County of Essex to obtain a title of the mobile clinic with the funds, as I indicated, from the High Priority Community Need Agency, which is the CMHA Windsor-Essex County branch that I work for. And then, as well, the operational costs that will be fully covered by the High Priority Community and OHT funding streams. And then, going forward, past that timeframe, we will need to look at the operational costs being embedded into the OHT budget proper. So we're getting ready to really seriously hunker down to implement this strategy. And we're extremely excited about the opportunities now finally to, you know, shift out of COVID and more into a wellness and recovery focus. And just really wanted to take the opportunity to bring this to all of you. And happy now to take any questions or comments from any of you.
Okay, thank you very much, Claudia, for, you know, for your presentation. And certainly greatly appreciate it. So I'll turn it over to members of county council if they have any questions or certainly comments that they want to bring forward to our delegation at this time. Pretty quiet. Yes, Mayor Malash, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Question. Thank you for the presentation. And I question about, do we have a schedule of when this mobile unit would be working throughout the county as opposed to the city and so on?
I'll take it, Claudia, if you want.
Go ahead, Chris.
And thank you for that, Mayor Malash and through the Warden to county council. The schedule for the High Priority Community work, and I may ask Kristin to speak a little bit more about this, is it's the partnership between EMS and Erie Shores Healthcare that we created the Community Response and Stabilization Team for COVID. And we go and we schedule amongst all different places. And we actually take referrals and people can contact us through the Erie Shores website to determine where those needs are. We're focusing on the high priority communities by those postal codes. But if there was, let's say, a high-use residential area or a complex within your municipality and we found out about it and we could go there, we would schedule that, no problem. Because the main thing is to get the healthcare in their area, in their community, so they're not having to go to the hospital or any of that stuff, or get them connected to the right care. And we've done that through the pandemic and through our little pop-up clinics in different areas. For example, we did vaccinations at Leamington Town Hall. And we actually did some wraparound care in that facility and got people connected to the healthcare. Kristin, I don't know if you want to answer more on that.
Thanks, Bruce. The only thing I would add is that we do meet on a weekly basis, sometimes even two or three times a week, just to prioritize and ensure that we have equitability across Windsor-Essex County. We know that's a sensitive subject and we're certainly committed to ensuring that the county is well-represented as we are out in those communities looking at those marginalized populations, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Liam Malash.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you for the presentation. You talk about, you know, the priorities. And, you know, COVID, you know, determined a certain set of priorities, you know, in the, over the last couple of years. But I see that waning, hopefully. And how does your organization look going into the future in terms of assessing a need, you know, managing, you know, the priorities may change from area to area depending on what the situation is? That's the first question. And the second question, is this group independent of the LIN organization?
So through you, Ward McNamara, to Deputy Mayor Malash. The Windsor-Essex OHT has a partnership signing of, I think it's 46 or 48 partnership organizations. They range from primary care to the hospitals, to Hotel de Grace Hospital, all the way through to primary care physicians in their own offices. And with that, it's a large partnership. Believe me, it's, as one of the co-chairs, it's hard to manage. But it's a very valuable partnership in that we have a lot of bench strength. So we've developed and are developing now a very strong data working group so that we can get the data from Ontario Health, from the Ministry of Health, from all of our different organizations, such as Essex-Windsor EMS. We can take our call volume and drill it right down to where we see any pressures. And then that allows us to take all of those pieces of information and forecast and project where we should be targeting or where we should be putting our attention to. So it's not just that, wow, where are we going to go tomorrow? We're trying to plan a year, two years down the road with the OHT as a full collaborative to give that regional approach and equitability, as Kristin said earlier, to everybody across the region. So a true partnership, a true collaboration works very strong. And together, we can get a lot of work done. Kristin or Claudia, I don't know if you have anything further.
I think the only thing that I would add is that it is strongly supported by Ontario Health and the ministry and their tremendous resources, one of which is the data and helping us to drill down into that data and really have a better sense of what the needs are in each of these communities and across Windsor and Essex County. So definitely not just funding support, but some of those other pivotal resources.
And just further to answer your question about the LIN. So approximately a year to two years ago, the LIN kind of went away. And that was the birth of Ontario Health and Ontario Health West. And that was the birth of also the OHTs. So the LIN has changed the name formerly called the LIN, but it's now Ontario Health.
Yeah, and I know, and I thank you for that, because, yeah, I know I still call it the LIN and I know there's been some transitioning changes. And some of that name is still out on things. And in the people that I deal with, they still somehow refer to it. But anyway, so, yeah, okay, so that's how the OHT has sort of evolved from that whole system. Okay, thank you.
Mayor McDonnell.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As a recipient of benefits of this initiative, as one of those postal codes that had need, I need to say thank you to the team for what you did. I think COVID highlighted that there was a segment of the population not getting that care. Whether they're intimidated by the normal routes, whether they just couldn't find access, whether they didn't know where to go. I think when you bring essential care like this down to the kind of the grassroots level where it's uncomplicated, we will see people accessing much better care and with the addictions and mental health and all of that. So many times, unless you know the roadmap of how to get it, you can't get it. So I want to thank you for this. I think it's a turn of events. It's a change of the landscape to be bringing the care to people like that where it's, again, accessible, but it's easy. And there's a level of comfort there that I think there's still some anonymity, if you will. Those people don't have to so much as, you don't have to know who their father was, whatever else happens in small towns, there is that ability to get the care without that. I want to thank you for that and for what happened also with our temporary foreign workers, how that played itself out. I went a couple of times to those tent setups and saw the interaction with the people. It was amazing and I was proud to be on the periphery of it and see it in action. So thank you to the team. It is invaluable what went on and I think it only bodes well for the future. Thank you.
All right, further questions or comments? I have, well, I had two questions, but one of them was, I think, Chief Crowder, you sort of answered. You know, when you have organizations like OHT and others, it takes two things. It takes human resources. But I think you've, my question was, you know, where, because where do you draw from? But I think you've answered that question with all the other agencies, whether it's a hospital and/or beyond, including, you know, health and mental health and EMS and so forth. The other is capital. And it takes money, obviously. And I've seen in your presentation, Claudia, not knowing what happens, you know, certainly in the future and how OHTs are going to be funded. But I did receive, on behalf of county council, kind of a fast breaker from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. And I think you were CC'd, I think, Bruce, on that. And some of the confusion is on the funding. And a letter was sent to Minister Elliott as well as the premier, you know, identifying that OHT is the responsibility of health and under the Health Ministry. And there was talk of using municipal tax dollars to fund the OHTs as well as monies that were allocated to public health and others. And so trying to get a better understanding in those terms and when we'll know exactly where your budget, your operating budget, because you left kind of a bit of gray area there. Can you elaborate a little bit in terms of where OHT will get the financing? Because, you know, let's be honest, it takes capital, human capital and capital dollars to move forward.
So I'll start and then I'll let Claudia kind of fill in some areas that I leave out that may create gray, but I want clarity from Claudia and from Kristin. But when we started down the OHT route, we had to, number one, get our partners together. And that's where, under the previous co-chairs, we got 46, 48 partners to sign on. There was a lot of work that had to be done without any money from the province. And to be totally transparent, the OHT at the time did develop an ask of the partners if they could contribute. And there was an ask made and some partners contributed. And it wasn't mandatory, it was totally voluntary of what organizations could do. Because we knew, going into either this year or next year, that we may not have funds from the ministry to actually operate the OHT. So thankfully, with the $1.2 million, we do have the money to take care of some capital assets that are non-clinical facing. So, for example, we just hired a transformation lead. So the money from Ontario Health or the Ministry of Health will pay for that transformation lead. We're going to have to hire a project manager, that will come out of that funding. We have to hire or buy some capital assets, computers, desks, and some of those things. But we also leverage from our partners. Windsor Regional Hospital has offered up some office space so we could put some people in there to house them and offered some IT support and that type of things. So the funding, I know some municipalities have been asked. We actually, in preparation of the budget last year, both some We actually, in preparation of the budget last year, both Sunparlor Home or as a county as a whole, we did place money in for the O H T into the budget just as a placeholder. But we're not prepared, the O H T is not prepared to be asking for that money at this time. We don't need it because we got the funding from the Ministry of Health. Fully understanding that health is a responsibility of the ministry and not the municipalities. So going forward, we have to build the budget. We have some very tight timelines from the Ministry of Health to submit our budget for '22, '23, and actually '23, '24. So the ministry is aware of what our budget is, where it's spent, where it goes. Claudia, extra on that?
No, I think you've hit all the points. And I think beyond what we know at this point for '23, '24, we're not really sure what the ministry is going to be prepared to fund. And some of the messaging we've received is that what we're receiving now is implementation funding. And the intent is that as the Ontario Health teams mature, that all of the current health organisations start sort of amassing some of their current resources into this more coordinated system of care. And so we're leveraging the existing funded dollars by organisation in new ways that create a more connected system and that some of that implementation funding might not be necessary. At least that's the messaging that we've received. We certainly haven't heard any of the details in terms of what that might look like.
Because I really, I really believe that this is a great opportunity to find efficiencies and direct, you know, if you want to simplify, direct traffic in terms of healthcare needs to the communities. And but I do believe that this is also a responsibility of the Ministry of Health to certain fund. And I think it's an opportunity for us in working with your team, you know, to work and to try to find a greater understanding. And because at the end of the day, you don't want to shortchange other agencies within the programme, although we're trying to find a more efficient and better delivery of healthcare across the spectrum. But, you know, it is certainly a responsibility that the Ministry of Health. Because at the end of the day, they are going to be the benefactors of it because you're creating boots on the ground locally and delivering a service that is going to be far more efficient and to be able to direct personnel in the right area. The mobile clinic, I think that's, we've seen how important it is even under the pandemic to be able to go to the people instead of the people go to the system. And so all of that, I think, is, you know, a tremendous potential. But I think the biggest key to the success of this is to make sure that we know where the dollars are coming from and to make sure that O H T, two years or three years or four years down the road, have the resources necessary to continue to deliver a top-notch service. I think that's where I have a bit of a concern and I know that AMO has some concerns on that as well. Is that the uncertainty of how we move forward two years, maybe three years down the road. So I think the open lines of communication between us and certainly your organisation, I think are going to be critical for us to make sure that we have, you know, the tools in the toolbox to make sure that the success of O H T and all the players will be there, you know, for long term and not just a short term. I think that those are the things that I certainly would like to see. Move forward to have more certainty of where the dollars are going to come from to really make sure that O H T is well-prepared to deal with the future. Any further questions or comments to our delegation? I don't see any. I want to personally, Claudia, thank you. I know you're kind of stepping back and then thank you, Kristin, for coming forward. And always, Bruce, you're always there when we need you and so forth. So I think I can safely call you the three amigos of, you know, your H A T. And so we certainly want to thank you for your continued great support to our community. And it probably hasn't been said enough, in particular, the last two years where it's been, it's been very, very difficult. And in particular, for the frontline folks like yourselves who deliver healthcare to our community. So thank you on behalf of all of us, but most importantly, on behalf of all of our citizens in the county. All right.
Thank you, Warden.
Okay, so we've got, I'm going to give you my, obviously, my address this evening as well. And, you know, on the subject of the pandemic. It's hard to believe that two years tomorrow on March 17th is when the pandemic was officially brought forward into our country and emergency staters were put in play. So when you think of it, two years living in certainly the shadow of global pandemic, it's a long time. And in our, beginning of our third spring since COVID-19 swept the world, we finally feel like we are stepping out into the sun. Number of deaths and hospitalisations are declining and restrictions are being lifted in Ontario and certainly elsewhere. And we are making plans to go places we haven't been in the last couple of years to see people we haven't been able to see for also the last two years. To our businesses that had to close their doors intermittently. Invest in safety measures and restrict their services for two years are moving ahead. And we cannot thank our local businesses enough for all that they've overcome to keep operating and certainly serving the community during this pandemic. They deserve our ongoing patronage and support for so many reasons. And so we're grateful to Essex County, Windsor Healthcare, to our frontline workers for all you have endured to get through the darkest hours of COVID-19. And we begin to thank the staff at Windsor Essex EMS, Sunparlor Home and other county departments for continuing to serve our residents despite the obstacles and the hardships that they have faced. Residents of Essex County, thank you for following health protocols for two years, getting vaccinated, being there for your neighbours. It has not been easy battling this virus and has been very stressful on everyone and at times frustrating. So thank you for your patience and springtime is a hopeful time. I may want you to feel hope. If you're still struggling, that is really understandable, but it's okay. And if you need to move forward in your own way, at your own pace, that's okay too. And we need to keep looking out for each other and we need to respect each other's choices about whether to continue wearing our masks in public or social distancing. We need always to be kind. We are ready to be done, no doubt, with COVID-19, but it's not done just quite yet. We are transitioning to life with this virus and it will continue to be a presence and at times a threat. But one can handle if we take the lessons that we've learned in the past two years. We need to act before the virus hits again. We need to think like that famous hockey player, Wayne Gretzky. We need to skate where the puck is going. And how we can do this, by getting vaccinated and ensuring we have all our three shots. At this stage, we know getting three doses is an excellent way to avoid severe illness, death from COVID-19. Some may need four doses to get best protection. We are all likely to need additional future vaccinations. Vaccination is simple measure that is getting us out of the cycle of pandemic waves of hospitalisations and death. So if you're still hesitating, this is the time to see your health provider and get that protection. Let's step out in the spring sunshine and move forward knowing we have done everything possible to brighten our future. Our Chief Administrative Officer, Mike Galloway, has asked for a few minutes also to speak about the dedication and certainly diligence of Essex County employees over the course of this pandemic. So I would now like to turn it over for comments from our C A O, Mike Galloway, for his steady and to thank Mike for his steady leadership in these trying times. And you talk about getting a baptism in fire. As you know, he was hired in the midst of the pandemic and here we are today, doing very well under his leadership. So thank you, Mr. Galloway, for your leadership and the floor is now yours.
Great. Thank you, Ward McNamara. As all of council knows, I rarely speak at the beginning of our council meetings. But the two-year anniversary of COVID-19 is an appropriate time to publicly recognise the passionate, professional and dedicated employees of the County of Essex. The county is unique in that there are so many diverse departments offering a wide array of services from infrastructure and planning services to the Solid Waste Authority, finance, community services, H R, Essex Windsor EMS, library, Sunparlor Home. Each has their own responsibilities, challenges, cultures. But despite those differences, there's a unifying sense of purpose, a feeling of pride in doing good work and abiding love for this region. The challenges presented by this pandemic have been historic, but County of Essex employees have risen to meet every last one. From protecting our most vulnerable residents, long-term care, to inoculating agricultural workers, from masking up and stepping up to ensure projects were completed and the business of the county went on. There is much of which we can all be proud. An example that stands out is the opening of two mass vaccination centres that helped protect hundreds of thousands of Windsor and Essex County residents. It was a monumental achievement, one that no doubt saved many lives. The ambitious, complex undertaking could not have been accomplished without the efforts of so many here at the county, at the host local municipalities. And at the forefront of this all initiative was the Essex Windsor EMS staff. Also, our nurses, P S Ws and support staff at Sunparlor Home. They've performed admirably in the centre of the storm and worked night and day to not only keep elderly residents safe, but to keep them happy during times of intense isolation. The residents at Sunparlor Home are fortunate to have such compassionate, capable and diligent caregivers. While these healthcare heroes have been saving lives, we've all been on the forefront lines during this pandemic, battling anxiety during the lockdowns, pivoting to Zoom calls and virtual meetings. Or trying to work from home while our children struggled with the remote learning. Our legislative and community services team worked closely with council and senior staff to ensure the business of council was conducted virtually and then employees and the broader community were informed about ever-changing COVID-19 guidance. The housing with sports team worked under extraordinary conditions to ensure the safety of vulnerable residents in congregate settings. Roads continued to be built and maintained during the worst days of the pandemic. And we continued to expand the countywide active transportation system, which saw an unprecedented usage as residents took to trails during extended lockdowns. Losing a construction season would have impacted our long-term goal, but our dedicated team and infrastructure and planning services moved mountains to complete vital projects on time and on budget. The Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority ensured the bins were picked up while planning for a greener future. The Essex County Library ensured that books were available even if the libraries themselves were shuttered for a time. These are the sorts of services residents here in the county dearly value. Continuing them in the midst of the pandemic was an impressive achievement. And none of this, none of it, would have been possible, of course, without our hard-working administrative team. Our finance team completed budgets and processed pandemic pay, embraced new tools and methods to get the job done virtually. Our human resources team was likewise champions, moving forward on vital engagement initiatives and the rollout of a new H R I S system. These last two years have been exhausting and mentally taxing. I would like to thank each and every County of Essex employee for stepping up and staying strong. The one constant throughout this ever-changing pandemic has been your extraordinary work and your incredible resilience. In particular, I would like to recognise county senior leadership team who have all gone above and beyond the call of duty during this pandemic. Mary Birch, Bruce Crowder, Christie Cronin, Sanders Weirz, Jane Brooks Keller, Michelle Bishop, Robin Greenall and Alan Boff. I'm proud and humbled to be leading such an exceptional team with so many talented and engaged individuals across the entire organisation. And finally, to all of you on county council, thank you for your unwavering support and leadership during the past two years. Thank you for giving me clear direction that you wanted health and safety to be the corporation's cornerstone priority as we navigated this pandemic. This council has had to make some difficult decisions over the past 24 months and we have never shied away from making them, always focused on the best interests of the corporation and residents you were elected to serve. To Ward McNamara and council, thank you to all of you and thank you to the entire team here at the County of Essex. Thank you very much for the time today.
Thank you very much, Mike. All right, with that, members of council, we'll move into communications. And we have 27 pieces of communications, if I could have a motion to receive. Deputy Mayor Bickety and Mayor Bondi. Hold in favour or as if any that is carried. Are there any listings of communications that members of council would like to bring forward? Okay. Move on to resolutions. 10.21, City of Windsor has a resolution which is calling on senior levels of government to increase support for housing retention policies, including but not limited to the creation of long-term sustainable funding envelopes to increase supply and to promote successful tendencies through increased supports and supportive housing programming. What's the pleasure of council? Deputy Mayor Leo Malas, move report or move the resolution?
Well, I'd like to speak a little bit to it as well.
Okay.
You know what, I'm in favour of, you know, affordable housing and the supply. I see this resolution as we constantly beating a horse. And there have been other resolutions out there, you know, saying the same thing and pushing towards the governments. And yes, I want to, you know, I want to support this, but I think in some way we got to approach something differently because we're not getting anywhere. We're falling behind as far as I'm concerned when it comes to affordable housing. I mean, market conditions aren't helping, but somehow we need a different approach or something. So I toss that out to anybody else and provide some insight on that matter.
Well, I guess my comment would be if you don't ask, you don't receive. And so it's, I really, I really think that, I certainly don't have the answers, Deputy Mayor Malas. But certainly I think it's something that is front and centre of all our minds is to create certainly more opportunities, you know, for the county. And I know it's been at the forefront of many of us on homelessness and making sure affordability is there. So those would be my comments.
Yeah, and I think with the elections coming up, I think we locally have to really be hammering away at our elected representatives, you know, as to what their position is on this. So anyway, so I do, you know, support this motion, this resolution. So anyway, so I do, I do, you know, support this motion, this resolution.
Yeah, I just want to add too, if you remember, Mr. Galloway made a presentation on county counts, and one of the first items on there was affordable housing and more, we need more, more money in order for us to deliver that. So moved by Deputy Mayor Melash and supported by Mayor Bain. Any further questions or comments on resolution? Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Bondi.
Thank you, your warden. I tend to agree with Deputy Mayor Melash in that we had a meeting last week with a developer for affordable slash attainable housing, and Warden, I had a conversation with you in relation to that, and they want more subsidies, if you will. And we're going, we can only give you certain things. You want more, then you have to go to the upper levels of government. So to your point, Warden, if we don't ask, we don't get. So hopefully, if the city's asking, this is in combination for Windsor Essex or Essex Windsor. We all had a copy of Mr. Galloway's letter he wrote to the city and knows where we feel about that. So we're hoping this attainable affordable housing will come to LaSalle, but even if we do say yes tomorrow, it's four years before it's going to be there. So I read an article in, I think it was The Star this morning, about we need 1.5 million homes just to keep up to where we should be. I don't know where it's going to come or how it's going to get paid for, but I think the city's doing the right thing by asking. So I'll support that motion.
I certainly appreciate that. And when you're looking at the increase in immigration and the numbers of 300,000 to 400,000, and I know what the numbers are going to be after what's happening in Europe, they all, when you think 300,000 to 400,000, you can see why 1.5 million becomes, maybe that's not enough. But certainly to the point, I mean, we've got to keep hammering and chipping away, and I think it's important. And one thing, I don't know if members of council are aware as well as that, Ontario is the only province that heavily is involved in social housing. All the other provinces, it's provincially mandated. Here, we subsidize through property tax dollars in the neighborhood of about $3.5 billion a year that we pay in, to support affordable and certainly social housing. We're the only province, and so it's important for us to, you know, keep hammering away. And I know that through my involvement at A M O and F C M, and it's really hard to get the other provincial jurisdictions to kind of support us too, and they're asking for more money, but they, we're the ones that are, this is the province that carries and shoulders, and I mean, the municipal sector of our province that really shoulder the a big load, and so we just got to keep chipping away. So on the resolution, duly moved and supported, all in favor? Pose if any, and that's unanimous. Consent agenda, members of council, 11.1, the approval of invoices. There's legal consultant services, that was dated March 16, 2022, from our solicitor, Mr. Sundine, so a motion on the consent agenda. Deputy Mayor Larry Verbicki and Mayor Bondi. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Pose, carried. We'll move on to reports and questions. 12.1, we have the Essex County Accessibility Advisory Committee. We have the minutes of the committee of February 10th, and I call upon Vice Chair and Deputy Mayor Gord Queen to bring that, those minutes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would move that they be approved.
Thank you. Support, Mayor McDonnell. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Pose if any of that's carried. 12.2, Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority, minutes of January the 12th, call upon the Vice Chair and the Mayor DeCarlo to bring those minutes forward.
Thank you, Warden, and I will move that recommendation.
Thank you. And support Mayor Bondi. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Pose if any of that's carried. All right, 12.3, we're looking for an extension of agreement for farmland rent, and I'm going to call upon our clerk, Mary Birch, will certainly provide the report.
Thank you, Warden McMarrett and members of county council. So there are 10 parcels of farmland totaling 813 acres in the vicinity of the regional landfill, which is owned by the County of Essex because the Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority as a board isn't allowed to own property. That farmland is rented out. It was a five-year lease that ran from November the 1st, 2016, to October the 31st, 2021, but there was a three-year, an option for three extensions to that property. So the first extension was granted in 2020, it ran from November 2021 to October 31st, 2022. The person who's renting the farmland is asking the Solid Waste Authority for an extension, even though it doesn't expire until October, they want to, you know, know that they are going to have it for the next year if they're going to put money into inputs for the coming season. So they're asking for, to implement the second extension to this lease. The Solid Waste Authority considered that at their March 1st meeting, and we're in agreement to grant this next extension. And so the recommendation before Essex County Council is that the warden and clerk be authorized to also sign the lease agreement to extend this lease for an additional year from November 1st, 2022, to October the 31st, 2023.
All right, questions, comments? Mayor Bondi.
I'll move it, and maybe just to comment in that at the USW meeting, I did mention that the going rate is lower, but for that type of land, that's why the landfill is there. It's a good price, and to the farmer who's putting in input costs, and not many farmers here, but input costs have gone up dramatically. So I made the recommendation at the time to approve it, and I'll do the same motion tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bondi, and supported by Deputy Mayor Leo Melash. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Pose, that's carried. 12.4, members of council, the Policy and Procedure Governance Framework. We have a report, the Policy Procedure Governance Framework, dated March 16, 2022, and that'll be brought forward by our Director of Council and Community Service Clerk, Ms. Birch.
Thank you. So the purpose of the report this evening is seeking county council approval for this Policy and Procedure Governance Framework. This is a new policy. We haven't had this before, but what we're finding is that we have a lot of existing policies and procedures which are in need of updating, may no longer be relevant, but we also have a lot of new employees over the last two years that maybe aren't clear on how we determine whether policies are required to be approved by council or whether they're more of an administrative policy that would be approved by senior leadership team and the C A O. So this is more of a guidance document to set that out and to also make clear to council how we're going to be proceeding on this. So the policy sets out some definitions. So it would be basically two types of policies, a corporate policy, which would require approval of county council, and then administrative policies, which would be vetted through the senior leadership team and be approved by the C A O. In order to, you know, determine which route policies would take, we went back to the Municipal Act and looked at the legislation. Section 224 of the Municipal Act sets out the duties of council, and one of those duties specifically listed is to develop and evaluate the policies of the municipality. But then it further goes on to state that there are administrative policies and controllership policies which can be delegated to administration for approval. Then we looked at section 227, which speaks to administrative practices and procedures which would be developed by administration. So the policy includes a specific definition for corporate policies and would refer to section 270 as well of the Municipal Act, which sets out nine specific policies which all municipalities and provinces in Ontario are required to have, and those would be policies which we would bring to council for council approval. Also, under section 6.1, it sets out a little bit more information on how corporate policies are categorized and classified, and it refers to any policy that would need to be part of the public record in order to be in keeping with open and accountable government, and that would affect the public directly, as well any policies that are specifically affecting council, that members of council would be brought to council. So as an example, we're looking at updating our council travel policy. That would be one that would be coming forward. Our finance department is looking at some new financial policies, like a credit card policy, which would affect the warden, so that would be one that would be coming forward. So the policy also goes on to talk about assigning an office of responsibility so that we're clear going forward what department would be responsible for keeping a particular policy updated. It would be whoever's assigned as the office of responsibility to do that. We've assigned basically a manager of all policies in our communications department, and that person would be responsible for making sure that as these policies are reviewed or that they are reviewed and kept up to date on the proper template so that they are accessible for the public and for administration, and that they're available on our internet. So, and then it also speaks to, you know, making sure that they're accessible and that if there are some minor revisions, that we were able to do that internally. And just some general discussion on making sure that there's plain language in them, that they're easy to understand, and that if there's a requirement that they be, you know, signed off by staff, that there's a process in place that that happens. So we're looking for council's approval on this policy, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Birch. Deputy Mayor Leo Melash?
Just one question. Thank you, Warden. On page two of seven, where it identifies section 270 Municipal Act as amended, you know, item A talks about, and maybe I'm reading this wrong or interpreting it wrong, but maybe you can get some clarification, it says for its sale and other disposition of land. What about acquisition of land? Should that fall in that same area?
So this is direct wording out of the Municipal Act, and it only speaks to requiring a policy for the disposition of land.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, I guess further through that, any acquisition of land, we would come to council and have a separate specific bylaw in order to do that, not just a policy.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Melash? Just moving to approve. Thank you. Support, Mayor Bain. No further questions or comments, all in favor? Pose if any of that is carried. Thank you. Okay. 12.5, the extension of the Long-Term Care Service Accountability Agreement, and that report will be brought forward by Jane Brooks Keller, our administrator of Sun Parlor Home.
Sorry about that, I was frozen, I think.
Yeah, you were frozen a little bit.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Kennedy Council. The report tonight is for information and also looking for recommendations regarding the acceptance of an offer to extend the existing service accountability agreement that the Sun Parlor Home has with now Ontario Health West for the period of the end of March this year to the end of March in 2023. Further, I'm also looking for authorization of the execution of the Declaration of Compliance that should be coming under that service agreement and the new high-intensity funding attestation. So pretty much on an annual basis, I come and present this report to you because so far it's been pretty much annually, although there is talk of extending it to a five-year term. That has not happened as of yet. So Ontario Health, now under the Connecting Care Act, is who is responsible for this agreement. And so I'm just, the notifications were provided in the appendix to sign on for, you know, another year. We have actually not yet received a Schedule E for this year, although we anticipate it will be the same as previous years, as their letter says that everything is staying the same. So the only thing that is new then is the third appendix, which is the High Intensity Needs Funding Attestation Form, which is brand new this year. Every month, we, at the home, will sign off that the claim meets the criteria, but this is looking for an annual attestation that we are using that funding appropriately. So there is no changes. If we look at the financial implications, there are no changes in funding to the home per se. It, everything stays the same, we're just extending the into another year, and there is no changes currently to the High Intensity Needs Funding as well, although I said, like as I said, monthly, we have to say that we're using the money as we say we will and according to the guidelines that are provided for high-intensity funding. So the recommendation is the county council accepts the terms of the extending letter from Ontario Health West to amend our accountability agreement for the period of March 31, 2022 through to March 31 of 2023, and authorize the execution of the required documents acknowledging the extension, that further you, authorize the execution of the Declaration of Compliance to the best of their knowledge and belief that the Sun Parlor Home has fulfilled its obligations under the service accountability agreement, and that Essex County would authorize the execution of the High Intensity Needs Funding Attestation Form. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, Deputy Mayor Bailey?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Certainly happy to move the recommendations and to move forward with the amendments to your M S A. Just a quick question, I'm wondering whether or not you, is it you yourself that will be the signatory executing the letter of compliance? And did they provide a template for that, or is one already drafted?
So typically, they have provided a template, so we're anticipating that it's coming. Usually, it's about two weeks after we get the letter for the agreement that the Schedule E comes. And it's usually council that has been signing that.
Yeah, go ahead, supplementary.
Thank you, just a little bit further. So it's council that will sign the Declaration of Compliance? Or who will be the signatory body of the declaration?
It has been the warden previous.
Okay. And so through you, Warden, and to you, do you receive some type of Declaration of Compliance that, okay, and then you're the signatory body on that, and as well as on the extension for the M S A?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Been moved by Deputy Mayor Bailey to our support. Mayor DeCarlo? All in favor? Pose if any of that's carried. Thank you. 12.6, County Road 22 Corridor Study Update, from County Road 25 to West Bell River Road. That's a report, 2022, oh, three, 16, and that's again, the County Road 22 Corridor Study Update. Bring that report forward. our manager of transportation, planning and development, Mr. Jerry Beal.
Good evening, Warden and members of council. I'm here to provide you with an update to the County Road Twenty Two Alternatives and Strategies Study. And if I may share my screen, I have a presentation.
Got it.
Okay, that's good. So we have been working collaboratively in partnership with the municipality of Lake Shore and with our consultants, WSP. And Crystal Calvo from the municipality of Lake Shore is here, as are David Lukasek and Justin Jones from WSP. And if there are any questions afterwards, we'll try and answer them. So a little bit of background to this study. The review is based on three guiding principles. In two thousand and six, there was a municipal a municipal class environmental assessment for County Road Twenty Two. That looked at a preferred design solution of a five lane cross section from East Puce Road to I C Roy Drive. That would be four travel lanes plus a center turn lane. That section has been constructed. We are now in the process of concept design, moving to detailed design for the next phase, which is I C Roy Drive to Bell River Road. And the EA in two thousand and six proposed a three lane cross section with one lane in each direction and a turn lane. The municipality of trap of Lake Shore had a corridor transformation strategy for this section of road. And this strategy sort of envisioned a mixed use corridor, supporting a range of commercial, employment, residential and community uses. It looked to create a corridor that accommodates the needs of pedestrians, transit users in the future, cyclists and vehicles. And it talked about consolidating accesses wherever possible to minimize conflict. Also, it looked at just provide, really, it looked at providing a nice place to walk, a nice place for commerce, a nice place for residents to be. We also have the countywide active transportation system. The master plan recommended a multi use pathway, upgrading the sidewalk on the south side to a multi use pathway or trail. We've worked extensively to sort of merge these and balance these three guidelines. We looked at the two thousand and six environmental assessment report and felt if we stacked to the fabric of that original report, an addendum or revisiting that wasn't necessary. So where are we in the process? Well, we've worked with the consultants, determined what we need to do, the purpose. We've established the guiding principles and we identified a few alternatives. There was the first consultation phase in December of two thousand and twenty. And we heard back from councils and also the public. And we selected a preferred alternative, which we then went in the summer to another information center. And now with that preferred alternative, we've heard back and we've got generally positive feedback. And here we are with a report outlining the concept design. And the next step is to move forward with detailed design. So what did we hear in the first round of consultation? There was a a good number of responses received online. And what seemed important to the public was to improve roadway capacity, improve traffic operations and mobility. There was strong support for access management along the corridor, including the closure of several side roads. There were in there was strong support for improvements to pedestrian and cycling active transportation infrastructure. Also, people wanted to get across County Road Twenty Two. They didn't want that to be a road which severed two sides of the community. And so traffic signals with pedestrian crossings was also something that came forward. So this is what we worked on in partnership. Alternatives that improved the capacity of County Road Twenty Two, improved facilities for cyclists and pedestrians, provided a pleasant environment with boulevards, trees, street furniture, more traffic signals for vehicle access, so they would have a safer place to enter and exit and for pedestrians to cross, and overall, just a safe road for all users. I'm going to show you a couple of slides which show you the preferred option that we put forward. And I'm going to go to the next slide, which shows the cross section. Here you'll note that we have two reasonable sized lanes, a center turning lane. We have a cycle track which is separated from the road. And this would provide a really good opportunity for moderately experienced cyclists. We do also have the multi use pathway on the south side, three meters, and perhaps novice cyclists or children, and a place for people to walk a sidewalk on the other side. And you note the larger boulevards with trees and streetscaping. So that's what we saw, and this does not deviate too much from the EA. It's within that fabric. It meets the needs of the corridor transformation strategy, and it meets the needs of C W O Ts. And I'm going to go back a slide. Also, regarding consolidation of accesses and traffic signals, we were looking at closing some of the roads, side roads, so that there would be less side friction with people turning in and out, less conflict points. And we would then move the entrances to signalized intersections at Emery Drive, for example. So that was the preferred option, and we went to consultation with that. And what we heard back was generally very positive. The design alternatives and preferred option were presented to municipal council in Lake Shore, the county council, and at a public information center in June. And members were provided opportunities to respond, and some did. We had less completed surveys. But I take it that possibly that was because people had been to the first one, seen this, they'd been to the second one and commented. From the responses we received, it was generally supportive with respondents thinking positively of our designed preferred option with respect to safety for all road users, with respect to the vehicle movement and traffic flow, and with respect to the infrastructure we were planning to provide for walking and cycling. Residents did express concerns, and this was mainly to do with the local road closures. And there was a concern that there would be an increase in traffic volumes and speeding in those local roads. Based on the traffic counts and the analysis carried out, we don't foresee the volumes increasing to a condition that would be unusual for a local road. And because we're not planning to change the streetscape, we're not planning to widen these or change anything, there shouldn't be an increase in speeds. However, the municipality of Lake Shore is planning to undertake data on traffic speeds and volumes as it is now. And a second round of data will be collected and carried out to verify any changes. And if warranted, appropriate traffic calming measures will be installed. These are the roads of concern. And with cul-de-sacs, you're going to see some roads decreasing in traffic. And others may have, but will have some increase, but we're not expecting that to be too large. So these are the roads that are going to be monitored. So with this preferred design, we are proposing to move forward with detailed design this year. We have it approved budget. If we can, we will build the traffic signals at Emery Drive and consolidate some of these accesses this year, rolling into next year. Two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four, we'll have completed our design and will be moving forward with property access acquisition and utility work. Then two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six, two thousand and twenty seven, will be a phased construction. Now, we have taken this same presentation to the municipality of Lake Shore yesterday. And it was received. However, we did receive correspondence and a resolution was passed. And that resolution was requesting that the County of Essex look at including right hand turn lanes in the eastbound direction at Emery Drive, Renault Line, Willowood Drive Walk Line, Grand View Boulevard, and that we look at these in the design. And it's in the eastbound direction as to the north, you have the lake, and there's less density, less population. To the south, you have more population, more density and more room for growth. And so the concern is in the future, people traveling eastbound out of the city, traveling eastbound, they may have increased congestion. So we can incorporate that request, and we will incorporate that request into the design process that we will be moving forward with. So that is the end of my presentation. Crystal Calvo from the municipality of Lake Shore, Dave Lukasek from the consultants, WSP, and Justin Jones are, and I, we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beal, for the your presentation. Comments? Deputy Mayor Bailey and Deputy Mayor Malas.
Thank you through you, Warden. I'm happy to move the recommendation to receive and can certainly tell you that at the local level, we had some good discussion, some animated discussion around what was required or what we felt would be required to see at that detailed design phase. So certainly heard the motion that was passed, looking and asking that we have some consideration around right turn lanes, and in particular, the area that would be leading to to our Atlas Tube Center in the arena. So the increased traffic that we anticipate would be in that space is certainly an area where we're looking and wanting to put that in there. So I think what we're looking for is a nice balanced approach. I mean, certainly this has an urban feel that goes through it, which is designed to slow the traffic down. And yet we have this motion that's talking about increasing the traffic speed. So I think what we're looking for is a balanced approach to slow it down, to have that nice urban corridor design, but also flow traffic in that eastbound direction. So folks are coming home from work and flowing traffic nicely that way. So looking forward to the detailed design and certainly appreciative of the great work that the county did with our administration and working in lockstep along the way. So happy to move it, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At proper time. I don't know if it's a question, Deputy Mayor Leo Malas.
And I I will second that, and I will just say I'm jealous of that design. It's looks like it's very well thought out and could almost fit anywhere.
Any further questions and comments? The only question I have, Mr. Beal, I I know that these processes take a long time. You've got to go through environmental assessments. You've got to do, you know, all your PICs and so forth. By altering the 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 design that's been there, is that going to add to the timelines? Is it do or does it take just a simple amendment to to the environmental assessment?
Thank you, Warden, for that question. The environmental assessment does not need to be amended. And we are moving forward into the detailed design stage. And so looking at turn lanes is not going to be a major change. What we want to do is make sure we get the balance right. And really, we've our focus at the time was getting the design principles and getting a concept. Now, when we move into the detail, we can look at each individual intersection in detail. So I don't, it's not going to delay things.
Okay, and so obviously with the turning laser, you're going to have to do offsets for the trail or 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 that would be the sidewalk, right?
Possibly. And we're going to see where they're appropriate and where they don't impact too much. And just try and get that balance.
No, I just, I I don't want to hold back the project because, you know, when when people say, okay, you alter, you know, the environmental assessment and, you know, they could take up to two years, you know, and so forth. And I'm going, oh, gee, you know, we certainly don't want to do that. Okay, any further questions or comments? None? All in favor? Suppose if any of that is carried. Thank you. Twelve point six one, so does that make that redundant now?
No, we would just like to receive that correspondence.
Okay, twelve point six one, could I have a motion received? Mayor Bondi and Deputy Mayor Queen, all in favor? Suppose that's carried. And so we'll move on to twelve point seven, the Regional Food and Organics Waste Management Program. And that's report number two thousand and twenty two oh three one six. And that's a regional food and organics waste management program dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two. And I'll call upon our our director of council services and our clerk, and also our director of financial services, our treasurer, to bring that report forward.
Thank you, Warden McMillan, and members of county council. Sandra and I are going to tag team on this one. I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Sandra. There is a lot of background in this report, which we're not going to go over with council. You you've had a presentation both at county council and at each of your local municipalities from Michelle Bishop, General Manager of the Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority, that I think provided you a lot of the the background information. So I'm going to start by going over the section that's entitled jurisdiction over the the collection and processing of organic waste. So I guess in order to determine how we would proceed, we need to first determine if it was within the jurisdiction of the Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority to take on the collection and processing of organic waste project. So we had our solicitor, David Sandin, who also provides legal support to the Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority. Have a look at the agreement that forms Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority. It's an agreement between the County of Essex and the City of Windsor. And it was from nineteen ninety four. So that agreement does set out a definition for waste, which doesn't specifically state organic waste, but it encompasses all waste in in that definition. The agreement also indicates that on behalf of the city and the county, the Solid Waste Authority has the authority to take steps and actions that are necessary for it to fulfill its roles and responsibilities and its function. And those are set out in their operational plan and budget. And the agreement determines that as long as the operational plan and budget are approved by both the city and the county, that the authority has the ability to proceed with those projects. The budget for two thousand and twenty two for the Solid Waste Authority was was in fact approved by City Council and County Council respectively in, uh, November and December of twenty-twenty-one. And they've included, um, a budget of a hundred thousand dollars for this project, um, for consulting fees. So, um, moving forward in, in order to, um, determine the quantity of waste that would be included in an RFP that the Solid Waste Authority would need to issue, um, there was a need to determine which municipalities in the county were willing to participate. So each was asked to, um, review this at your councils, to pass a, a motion advising whether your council wanted to participate in this regional project. Um, and we've received, uh, all responses now at the time of the writing of this report. We had received all except for the, uh, town of Kingsville. Um, and, uh, on your addendum agenda this evening, uh, you'll see that we did today receive the response from Kingsville. So just in summary, Amisburg, Lake Shore, La Salle, Leamington and Tocumseh, uh, resolutions all indicated that they support a regional approach to the food and organics, uh, waste management. Tocumseh further, um, authorized participation in the regional program. And La Salle Council also requested in the resolution that we begin to investigate comprehensive regional approach to the collection and management of waste as well as organics and recyclables. Um, the Town of Essex resolution did not indicate a support for the initiative. It just simply received, uh, the report that had been presented by, um, the General Manager of the Solid Waste Authority. And Kingville's resolution, um, indicated that it does not wish to participate in the short-term service contract. So, uh, now it's the role of County Council to determine, um, based on the, the resolution that was passed in October of twenty-twenty-one, uh, whether, um, County Council wants to, um, proceed as and advise the Solid Waste Authority that this is going to be a regional approach for all municipalities in the county, or whether County Council wishes to just pass the information on to the Solid Waste Authority as to those municipalities that have indicated that they want to participate and those that don't wish to participate, um, would be excluded. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to, uh, our Director of, uh, Financial Services and Treasurer now in order to, um, go over the financial implications, um, of this report. So I'll turn it over to you, Sandra.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, through you, Warden, to County Council. Um, so as Mary said, I'm going to talk briefly about the financial implications of this decision or opportunity this evening. Um, and it's a bit of a different financial analysis than I normally would give. Um, because this is an initiative of the Solid Waste Authority, uh, the County of Essex doesn't, uh, contribute directly to the finances of the, the authority. And as you know, um, the municipalities themselves, the locals, as well as, uh, the City of Windsor are billed directly by the Solid Waste Authority. Uh, so i- in essence, the county itself doesn't, um, fund the operation. But as we all know, there's only one taxpayer, um, so regardless of who gets the bill or where it comes from, um, you know, I did feel it was prudent at this time to offer County Council some financial considerations that you may wish to, um, review this evening in making this decision. Uh, so a regional approach, um, is going to provide for economies of scale. Um, this is a, uh, a significant undertaking for the region. Um, and doing it alone, uh, is not recommended. Um, and doing it in larger numbers is actually where we've seen, um, and certainly backed by the consultant's information, uh, where we can realize some savings. So a, a more fulsome participation is going to realize greater potential savings for everyone. Uh, the other, uh, item we wanted to highlight this evening, you know, speaks in part to the La Salle, uh, recommendation or resolution. I mean, it's about optimizing the diversion of organics and its integration with the, the traditional waste streams. Um, so we do see, feel that we will realize greater financial savings for the whole of the system by centralizing a garbage collection as well. And we recommend investigating that simultaneously, uh, with this decision about organics. Uh, and in essence, you know, we want to incentivize residents to participate in our organics program and similarly a recycling program. So if we can, um, link the, the garbage collection, uh, frequency uh, to the organics and the recycling frequencies and perhaps dial back the garbage collection and dial up the other two, um, it's obviously going to incentivize folks to participate in the programs and source separates, um, at the residential level. Uh, that, um, consideration of centralizing garbage collection contracts also has a similar potential for economies of scale. Currently, those garbage collection contracts are entered into, uh, individually at the local level. Um, so we in essence have eight separate garbage collection contracts, um, the seven at the local level as well as the City of Windsor. And if there is a mind to regionalize, um, then going to market en masse for all garbage collection is certainly going to realize, um, economies of scale. Uh, we've also been in touch with, uh, different vendors in the marketplace and we recognize that, uh, there are limited players in our region currently. Um, but we have, uh, received interest from folks outside of our region uh, that would be willing to bid on this particular contract if it was of a greater magnitude and scale. And finally, with the ban on organics on the horizon, we also think it's prudent for all municipalities to participate to ensure that any organic solution supports the entire region's capacity needs. Um, there is a concern that leaving some municipalities out exposes those municipalities to capital and operating risks of having to proceed with a standalone solution in the future to meet their needs. Uh, in terms of kind of the, the background on how we've arrived here, um, on our recommendations this evening, both Mary and I have participated in a number of, uh, oversight and technical working group meetings, um, going over a lot of the details of this, uh, opportunity for the region. And out of that particip- participation, uh, we have drawn some conclusions that we also want to share with council this evening. Uh, so we, we feel at this point that this regional solution for organics, uh, is the environmentally right thing to do. Um, it also aligns with our regional community energy plan goals. Uh, it will ensure compliance as the county municipalities continue to grow, um, and both in population and density. And we also believe that does provide a sound business case for that transferring of governance of waste collection contracts from the local level to the regional level to support savings for everyone. It'll maximize the potential cost savings. Um, again, if we can look at this thing, uh, from a holistic approach rather than just singularly from the organics lens. The recommendation this evening, um, is fourfold. Uh, the first three portions of the recommendation deal with receiving a number of pieces of correspondence. Uh, but I do want to highlight the, the fourth recommendation this evening. Um, and administration is recommending that County Council advise the Solid Waste Authority prior to the end of this month, uh, that all Essex County municipalities participate in a regional solution for the collection and processing of organics, organic waste material from urban settlement areas at a minimum as part of the short-term processing contract that we intend to commence January first, twenty-twenty-five, or immediately upon the expiration of the municipality's existing waste collection contracts, whichever is later. Uh, and I just want to take a moment to, to further unpack that, um, particular recommendation. Um, because garbage collection is in the jurisdiction at the local level, uh, we recognize that your, your current collection contracts commit yourselves to a certain level of, of tonnage. Um, and as you extract the organics from that value, um, you know, that we don't want there to be any negative impact to your existing garbage contracts. So the recommendation this evening is that, you know, municipalities would only come on board with the organics piece as those existing waste collection contracts expire, uh, to allow for, you know, the renegotiating, uh, either at the individual level, but we're recommending at a regional level of those garbage collection contracts with the understanding that the organics tonnage would come out and it would be, uh, dealt with separately. So again, just a little bit more information as to the, the rationale for why we phrased it that way in the recommendation this evening. Uh, with that, you know, Mary and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, both, uh, Mary and Sandra. Uh, and, uh, any questions or comments at this stage? Uh, Deputy Mayor Leo Malash.
Thank you, Warden. And, and the, the question is to Sandra on the last statement you just sort of talked about in that we would continue collecting the waste inclusive of the organics until the contract. Is that in com- does that still put us in compliance with the mandate of the government? That by a certain time we have to have organics? Uh, um, is it, you know, you know, the collection, the separation of organics?
Uh, through you, Warden, and that we have, um, the General Manager of the Solid Waste Authority on the call this evening to Michelle Bishop, um, who, you know, Michelle, please feel free to jump in, uh, if I misspeak. But, um, I, I believe the goal is to move towards the compliance and, you know, recognizing the fact that we have existing garbage collection contracts that commit municipalities to certain deliverables. Um, and I, I don't believe that, uh, we'd be looking to put any particular municipality in a negative position on a garbage contract by asking them to participate any sooner than the expiration of their existing contracts.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just have a question, Sandra. If the majority of County Council directs administration to look into that regional approach as you're suggesting in the fourth point, uh, for solid waste, what happens to the organics piece? And I'm, I'm thinking in particular to the two communities that have said they don't want to take part. Do, do they just come on board because of, uh, democracy and majority voted that way? And if that isn't the case and they're allowed to still not do it, um, what happens to the costing, um, if we are part of a regional program? Does, does that question make sense?
It does. Uh, thank you, Mayor McDonald, and through you, Warden. Um, so, you know, County Council has a, a number of options this evening, in, in my opinion. Um, you know, you, you could take the approach where majority rules and, and you, you send word to the Solid Waste Authority Board that the municipalities will participate regionally, um, and, and all will participate. Uh, you can also structure your response to, you know, suggest support for the municipalities that have identified their wish to, to participate. Um, and, you know, perhaps set aside the municipalities that currently choose not to. Uh, there is an option for those municipalities. We can structure an RFP to the market, um, with the set tonnage of the folks we know who want to participate with an option, you know, at a later date if the municipalities who choose not to, you know, get on board, um, at the expiration of their contract. Uh, at least make the market aware that there's some additional tonnage there and they could potentially plan for it, um, to leave that lever, uh, available to pull or not pull when the time came, you know? And I would suggest that if i- it's not a majority, uh, movement to the Solid Waste Authority Board that, you know, perhaps you do leave the door open for those municipalities who today don't want to participate, but who may change their mind, you know, in the, the years that are ahead. Um, as we approach that twenty-thirty potential ban on organics in the landfill, even if municipalities aren't triggered to participate based on population or population density, we still have that other, uh, looming deadline that, you know, that we want to make sure that all county municipalities are well prepared for. Um, so I think there is an ability to be flexible, um, to recognize perhaps, you know, the, the municipalities of Essex and Kingsville who don't wish to be currently a part or haven't, you know, expressly stated their support. Um, and still design an RFP to capture the tonnage for all of those others, but leave it as an option, you know, that down the road, uh, those two municipalities could still be considered.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Mr. Warden, if, if I may just comment further, um, kudos to Lake Shore that has decided to, to jump on board despite the density piece. Um, I, I sit as the Chair of the A Mo Solid Waste Task Force and I was quite perplexed to find out that no one else was discussing organics like Windsor Essex. Well, I asked them, I said, are you, are you not participating? And they looked at me and they said, we did that ten years ago. I'm talking Innisville, I'm talking Minto, I'm talking Mississauga, I'm talking the little bitty Spit Spot villages, uh, east, eastern Ontario. I was ashamed of us. I was ashamed of us. Look at our population density overall. And, and we still are hesitant. And yet, and, and if I can remind you, in twenty nineteen, when the climate emergency declaration came to County Council, I was the only one that asked questions about pricing. In fact, I kind of felt like a pariah, like I was the one that was against motherhood and apple pie. Um, actually, I think I made someone cry that night because I had questions. And I, and I, and I said, I need to know the cost of this before I commit. And yet, you know, when there's climate emergency measures like giving people money for putting in new windows and giving people money for upgrading their furnaces, that seems to be only available to the people that already have a, a solid income. And, and, and that they're doing that for the betterment, human betterment, betterment of society. But the idea of organics applies to everyone. It doesn't matter. It, it's doing your piece no matter what your income level is, no matter what your education level is. It's all of us doing our part. And to me, because we all signed that climate emergency declaration, I feel like this is putting our, our money where our mouth is or our mouth where our money is. And as my C- C O likes to tell me very many times, sometimes the cost of not doing something is more than the cost of doing it. And I honestly feel that in this instance, a regional organics program is something we need to do, that we all pay the same for our garbage collection. I had a, a lengthy conversation with Michelle Bishop about this and she said that we're all paying different prices for our collection. This way we'd all pay the same thing. It would be efficient. It would be for the betterment of the community. It would be better for Essex, for the stuff in the ground, for the stuff in the air. It's just better for all of us and I feel strongly about this. I don't often, well, yeah, you'll probably say I often get on soapboxes, but, um, environmental, I always have to do my homework on that because I think it becomes, it becomes a really easy soapbox to get on because, because of our situation with climate change. But, but in this case, I feel strongly, I think we all need to be a part of this. We need to do it regionally to set an example. And if you look back in those of us on solid waste, we went from the city wanting us to do the big build and I understood the hesitancy of the partners who didn't want to do it because that was a huge financial commitment. But now this isn't about that huge big bill. This is about doing what we need to do, training our residents how to, to separate their, their garbage. Much Guelph has done this. They've been the model for years. We just need to do that. And again, it, it goes back to, to doing our piece for the betterment of the world, not even just for our little corner. And as a final note, this is having our county hat on. How many times have we been told to wear our county hat? And this is an instance where we can show that we can wear our county hat without worrying about that particular dollar, that portion of, of the tax amount, without worrying about that because it, it's better for the, the greater good. So that, that's my soapbox. I'll climb off it now, but I feel very strongly that this is a really good, a really good initiative and it needs to be done as a whole. And this is something that we're, it's, it will be our legacy for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor McDonald. Um, Mayor Bondi, uh, and I'll go back to you, uh, uh, first speakers, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you. Go ahead, uh, Mayor Bondi.
Thank you, Warden. Um, I like to climb on Hilda's soapbox and I'm pretty tall, but I think she's got it pretty high up there. So, um, well said, Hilda. Um, as a municipality within the county, we don't receive a lot. If you look at dollars in to the county and dollars back to us, it's minimal. See Watts, we started that years ago. We're not getting any money from that. Sorry, let me rephrase that. We're getting minimal. Look how much Lake Shore is getting tonight with the county roads and, and all the improvements. We're not getting any of that. But to your point, Hilda, Deputy Mayor Malash and myself, we wear the county hat. It's better for us as a region. We talk about Windsor Essex, I'd rather say Essex Windsor, and together, it's a hack nine expression, together we, we, we achieve more. And to opt out of what you want and don't want, I mean, if you're going to do that, I would like to take out a lot of things that I don't want to pay for. But it's part of being a munis- uh, a county government. So I just want to echo what you said, Hilda, not as eloquently as you did, but, uh, that's my little soapbox. And, um, I would like to make the motion that we go as recommended with all municipalities and we all go together as one team. Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep, keep that and, and, um, I'll certainly, um, go back to, uh, um, uh, Deputy Mayor Leo Malash for, uh, his comment and then, uh, I'll go, uh, okay, Mayor Malash and Santos.
Um, and, and thank you, Hilda. Well said. It's right. Um, and, and through you, Mr. Mr. Warden. Um, yeah, this, this is a, a, this is a good, um, regional, uh, Yeah, this, this is a, a, this is a good um, regional uh in- initiative that can, can be handled at, at, at the region, at the, at the region level. And, 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 you know, to Mayor Bondi's point, okay, yeah, we can all opt out of things. Uh, and I'm gonna maybe make enemies here, but I'm gonna talk about C Watts. Uh, not C Watts, I'm gonna talk about Swift. Amersburg didn't need Swift. But we have never said no to jumping in on what I'm gonna call the county initiative because I and many others view it as a county initiative, and it's, it's a, it's a to the betterment of the county. And this is no different. This is to the betterment of the economy, the environment, and all of the things. And so I really feel that we need to look at it as a county approach, put our county hat on, and, and support it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, yes, uh, Mayor Milos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. And those are, those are great comments about uh trying to be unified and move forward on a, on a project altogether. But the dollars are allocated to each municipality. They're not county expenses. C Watts is a county expense, and if the town can afford to jump on board, then they put their portion in. It's the way it is with C Watts. Swift, it's a, it's a county um tax. It's not, the municipalities don't have to pay into that. It's same taxpayers, yes, but it's through the county. If this organics food program was entirely through the county and collected as a countywide um taxation rather than being charged back is what I hearing is gonna happen. Uh, right now, Essex is not in a position that they can pay for the amount of money um that we've been told that we'd have to pay. Uh, we'd rather wait out, wait it out if we don't have to pay now and put money away year after year until a time such that we need the service. So if it's gonna cost us $300,000 or $500,000, we can put X amount of dollars away every year until we actually need that service or come up with pay it when we have to pay it rather than in advance. So that's where we're at right now, and uh I think you'll see a letter uh come the same as what um Kingsville presented this evening. From the Town of Essex, we have our council meetings on March 21st, where we'll be deciding what letter we're gonna send. But uh, I believe the direction that you'll see from Essex Council is that we're gonna wait and um not be part of it right, right at the beginning. Thank you.
Okay, any uh further questions or comments? Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead, uh, Mayor Santos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and, and I mean, speaking regionally, I mean, obviously, uh, we certainly would appreciate seeing a collective, you know, voice going forward. Uh, but normally, that's based on jurisdictions that we have specifically. You know, um, the concern I have procedurally, legally, is uh that's a uh, collection for, for rep use has been a municipal jurisdiction uh fully costed and paid for by the municipalities, just like policing. I know years ago, we talked about doing a regional police force as well, and, and there's legal procedures that we needed to do if we were going to upload that, lower, lower tier responsibility to the upper tier. I don't hear any of that language today about uploading the lower tier responsibility to the upper tier. So that raises a legal question, as if we can do that, the upper tier has, I think, zero dollars invested uh in this project or program, other than through a 1994 agreement that says all our, all our county municipalities are gonna work together towards a landfill agreement. So I think there's a lot more uh questions than answers that are being offered with the report today. Certainly, you know, our council uh in the Town of Kingsville is supportive of moving forward and some initiatives to help defray and, and move uh some of the organics away. And we're willing to look at that in the interim. We've been doing that with our, 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 our leaf and yard waste collection for years, again, separate from any other program that was uh being promoted by the county. So I think it's a question of uh jurisdiction. I don't believe we have the jurisdiction to force municipalities to uh say we're going to be on board with that. I think that would be challenged, and uh I hate to see us have to go down a legal challenge before trying to get a further, uh, greater collaboration with. Is the county asking us to upload the service to the upper tier? So the county then would be using the dollars collected from the property tax to fund the project? Or is that not what we're talking about? And I think that's the, the uncertainty that's being presented here. Uh, the Town of Kingsville's density, you know, we don't see us qualifying under the provincial mandate until 2043, based on our current growth estimates from now until then. Uh, we know there'll probably be cha- policy changes with the Solid Waste Authority and landfill. We're willing to work with that as a municipality, again, dealing with our jurisdiction. But if there's gonna be a change or direction as a region, then we should all be aware and have those, uh, I think, legal um, uh, I guess, uh, those legal statements and those legal resolutions from each council saying we will upload a collection of waste to the upper tier. Until that time is there, I don't think we're ready, and this, this motion is actually premature to include all municipalities. We haven't given up the jurisdiction, so that's kind of my challenge there.
Uh, okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Queen and uh Mayor DeCarlo.
I appreciate the attention. I saw the first presentation at county council. I was concerned about the dollars and cents. And basically, I expected Mr. Milos, since he has a same background on site, questioning the expense. When it came to the Town of Kingsville's presentation, again, it, dollars and cents. We look at 20 years, we may need it. I agree with the mayor of Leamington, wherein she says, yes, we probably should do it. And that's the discussion we had at our council meeting Monday night was how can we achieve some of the initiatives without buying into the project today, given the high cost and high expense? And a little bit of brainstorming occurred, and we look at the work the mayor has made reference to, everything from the leaf collection to the workshops that we have been promoting for years to encourage the use of uh backyard composting and basically everything from the food waste. We've even had the owner of our local home hardware store assist us with those presentations throughout the community, encouraging just that. I particularly liked our financial director's presentation, where she outlined that we do have the option of basically letting the Solid Waste Authority do the quotations with the options so that the communities such as Essex and Kingsville know what could be achieved in the future. That's the only option that I can see, given the direction. We talk about county hats. I've worn a county hat just a few years at county council. Prior to that, I was a county school board trustee, and I'll tell you, merging two large corporations into one doesn't always work well for the community. And I think we, as council members, although we are county members, we have to recognize what our residents want at this time, given the price tag that's attached to it.
Mayor DeCarlo.
Thank you, Warden. Um. Hey, I'm, I'm, hmm, I, I was hoping we would all agree on this issue. Uh, because I, I think what's being missed is we're all in by the nature of the business. The business is waste, whether the waste is recycled or not. And everyone's rates are affected by what goes in and what doesn't go in, the landfill. And, and we've spent a lot of time on this. Uh, um, I've had some time to talk to Ms. Bishop as well, and what's going to happen is, is with redirecting the, the organics, just like recycling away from the landfill, um, that will affect everyone's uh per ton rate, right, tipping fees. So there's going to be a cost and an effect regardless of what the decision is. The goal, of course, is to keep everyone's consistent by having everyone in on that model. And, uh, let's see what I got here. Um. We, we've approached it from an environmental uh perspective, from a cost perspective, and as Mayor McDonald eloquently stated, from the cost of not doing it perspective. I don't know what else we can offer other than, I guess, in the future, if the province does do an all-out ban, then everyone's in whether they want it to be or not. So I, I guess what I'm asking for now is, is just consideration that um we are all in. And, and I do appreciate and respect the municipalities' positions that um, that are not interested in going in at this time. Um, but I just will point out that you will be in on the basis that you may not be redirecting your organics, but you will be affected by the cost of what's going into the landfill either way. And uh, I think I'll just leave it at that now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, uh, Mayor DeCarlo. Um, I I'm, I, I, I'm gonna weigh in as well, is that of any municipalities out of the group that could say, yeah, you know what, we could wait probably seven years before we do anything. Our waste contract has an automatic renewal in two years' time, and we got a pretty favorable rate at that time. But having said that, uh, we looked at uh, you know, what would make sense that at, at the end, uh, to Mayor Bondi's point, was, uh, we're probably the only jurisdiction that I think with uh, and, and I'm gonna include regional governments as well, that um, waste management is uh, you know, all of the lower-tier municipalities, like Peel and, and uh, um, uh, Niagara, Durham, all of them, it's, it's all upper-tiered uh, um, governments that, that deal with it. And uh, and I think what we need to do is look at the bigger picture. I couldn't have said it better than, than what Mayor McDonald, uh, and, and you talk about eloquent, it was. And, and the fact remains is that um, uh, maybe 2025, it's not the date, maybe it will be. Uh, but you can guarantee that um, this is coming uh certainly uh in, in the near future. And not only the dollars that are uh also uh the impact, but looking at municipalities that now, that now have to face um, uh, the greenhouse gas effects. And we've got some pretty ambitious numbers that we have to meet uh and targets. And if we ever are going to meet those targets, and even our own that we've um, uh, adopted um a, a resolution in, in 2021 for our own, uh, it starts with the greatest contributor, the greenhouse gases, which is organics and, and methane. The other thing that we, we haven't looked at yet too as well, and I think this is where it's moving forward, we have to have that, that uh, uh, conversation as well, is um, and uh, Mayor Bondi, Mayor DeCarlo, and I, and, and certainly uh Deputy Mayor Milos and, and Mayor McDonald will, will attest that I questioned uh the, uh, the Windsors uh model early on and uh questioned them on, on the science, on, on the, uh, the costing, uh, the technology uh and, and so forth. But fully understanding that we needed to do something and to explore every opportunity that we can. There's another side of the coin, and nobody, nobody talked about that, where uh organics can be uh also a money generator. Uh, we, we don't know with all of the emerging technology that, that is available about the capture of, of methane and, and working to capture the methane gases that are coming off our, our regional landfill uh and uh, uh, and using that as renewable gas, uh, collection of hydrogen. Uh, a, a lot of that is, is, can be recouped uh and certainly in expenses, but I said it uh many times, and Hilda, you repeated it, and it was, what is the price of not doing anything? It's probably greater. And um, I think, uh, you know, our, our treasurer said it best as well, is the uh, the synergies are much better in, in, in the bigger package. And um, I think we need to exercise every opportunity that we can uh to go out and uh, and, and see what type of partnerships are out there for us to benefit. To dismiss it and say, oh, I'm gonna wait till two or three years, I respect the, uh, you know, the lower tier that says that. But really, uh, I think we need to look at it, at the bigger picture because no matter what, it's gonna cost us. It was said, uh, you know, by uh, by others, uh, uh, Mayor DeCarlo. There is no doubt, it's gonna cost us. Whatever reduction uh that is minimized going into the landfill is gonna affect the tonnage. So there's a cost factor there. So how do we recoup that? How do we deal with the $56 million debt that we, uh, we have to continue to pay for? And, and so um, we cannot escape that. We can't pull ourselves away and say, well, maybe in three years' time, I'll come in, or four years and so forth. And I, I think the, the best solution for us is as a collective um, moving forward where we can benefit from those synergies and look at the bigger picture. Look, look at what the impact to the environment is uh and uh, uh, and so forth. Yeah, we could all have a, a backyard uh, um, uh, what do you call them? I lost my, my uh compost, composter. But then again, we, we tried that in our community, we, and, and we got rid of them because we, we have a rodent problem. And, and a lot of it was uh, was adding to that. And, and so um, I, I, I really believe that we shouldn't shortchange ourselves. Let's, let's look at and flip every rock. Let's, let's go and have an opportunity to maybe work with administration uh at the county level and, and certainly our lower tier uh and, and work with uh Michelle and, and, and her team uh to find, uh, you know, the right solution for us for today that's gonna bring us uh certainly into the future. Um, and, and uh, Mayor McDonald, you're right. We, we seem to be the last ones in the province that are moving forward towards um, dealing with organics, and other municipalities are far more ahead than us in dealing with that. And I would be shocked if you didn't have a survey in each of our municipalities and ask your citizens about if you would be in favor of a organic collection. I'd be shocked if you'd, if it'd be less than 50%. And because I know um, my deputy mayor, myself, uh, Joe Bicchetti, we get calls all the time, and if there's a young families in that, when are you going to be doing it? We've been hearing this. And so if I'm hearing it, I'm sure you're hearing it as well and, and, and in that regards. But I, to dismiss it and just say, nah, you know, I'm gonna wait down the road, I think we're missing an opportunity here. We're missing an opportunity to find um, solutions uh in the, uh, to a problem that we have. And uh, we have a responsibility uh to reduce our carbon footprint, and this is an absolute golden opportunity for us to do that, to reduce um, the production of, of methane gas. And, and landfills do generate a lot. We know that in that regards. And I, I really um, think that if we do this properly, there's a tremendous opportunity of partnership out there for renewable gas and the generation of, of hydrogen gas can be a generator of revenue to offset the reduction of, of uh material going into the landfill. And so I, I, I do support um, you know, um, a, a regional approach. Uh, and uh, uh, i- if it becomes a, a, an issue of uh, um, can we do it or can't do it? I think uh our legal uh would have to source that out, but I, I really would like to see us move forward uh on a regional approach. I think it makes good sense. And, and, and piggyback our, as our, our um total waste package, I think uh being done by the county would make a lot more sense. I mean, uh, those who are renewing contracts right now are probably, had to be sitting down when they got their renewals. And if you think you're gonna get a bargain at this stage here with the reduction of, of uh, uh, vendors, uh, you're gonna be in for shock therapy. I think LaSalle got a, got a rude awakening just recently in terms of uh, uh, their, uh, their, their waste. And like I said before, Town to Comsey, we've got, we've, we've got seven years. We can just say, you know, we'll just ride the storm for seven years, but I don't think it would be right because uh I think we're looking at it a, as an opportunity for um, all of us to achieve other than the disposal of organics, but also the opportunity to meet our challenges on, on, uh, on climate change. Mayor Bain.
Just quickly, Mr. Warden, I think as a county, we have to stay together. There are a number of issues, and over the years, one municipality or another benefits more than the other, but But when you look at all of the items that we're in together, in the end, we all benefit. And I think we need to stay united on this because six months down the road, there'll be another issue and two or three municipalities may want to pull out because they're not getting a big benefit right now. But we do get a benefit. It may vary for each municipality, but we do. And I think if we want to stay strong and continue to benefit, we will much more united than we will split up.
Thank you, Mr. Bain. Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, pleasure of counsel. Go ahead, Mayor Bondi, Mayor DeCarlo.
I'll still make the motion that we go united as per the recommendations. And assuming if there's legal issues, our legal department will deal with it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor DeCarlo?
Yeah, I would second that. And I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to include the, at least looking into the regional waste that LaSalle brought up. I don't think you're gonna have a better opportunity than now with everything that's going on to try and combine everything at once. Everything is affected anyway, so if we can do that, great. If not, I'll just second the motion from Mayor Bondi.
I don't know. I have no answer in terms of adding that piece to it. But I don't know if, maybe I can have Mr. Galloway just maybe weigh in.
Yes, through you, Ward, back to counsel. Just to let counsel know that some of those discussions are already currently underway. We've already had all CAOs at a meeting approximately about two weeks ago to at least initiate the discussion. And it was initiated because some of the renewals that are transpiring to almost three of your municipalities are substantially more than what your current contract values are. So that discussion is currently underway. We'll hopefully be able to give you some further information in short order. But that discussion is underway.
Thank you.
Just on that note, Mr. Galloway, I don't want to put you on the hot seat or, you know, but in your opinion, if we were to say amalgamate all of the pickup into one in that, I know locally, we're kind of hamstrung on the amount of vendors that we do have because of, you know, vendors have been buying each other out and that. In your opinion, do you think with a bigger contract, we'd have a better opportunity to bring additional vendors from other parts of the province?
Through you, Ward, back to counsel. The fitness leaders have indicated in her presentation that there has been some high-level communication with other providers that have either started to call in. So I think the answer to that question potentially is yes. But what I can offer counsel as well, and maybe I have a bit of a different take on it than some of the individuals that have been in this area for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. You know, my travels over the past 25 years have really only taken me three spots, Water Region, Mag Region, and Peel Region. And now obviously the County of Essex and the Windsor Essex area. And I can tell you that the other three areas, waste collection, organic collection, and recycling is all done by one entity. And it's all being done currently. There is organics, you know, quite frankly, if I think back to my time even in Water Region, and I was born and raised in Kitchener area, I think back in the early 2000s, they were already doing organics and starting to do organics. So that was 20 plus years ago. So just so counsel knows, when in most of those areas, when a truck comes by your home to get right down to the nitty gritty, a truck comes by in most of those areas to pick up organics and waste together. It's one truck. And then recycling is picked up by a second truck. So that is the most efficient and effective way. Most areas in the province have found to do that type of collection. Some of those areas do the service themselves as an internal service. Some of those regional, upper-tier jurisdictions contract the service out. But it's all done by one provider regardless of whether it is internal or it's a contract. All those three services are provided by the same provider in most cases. So just a little bit of context, just because I have a little bit of experience from other areas across the province, which sometimes is helpful. But I can tell you that myself and Ms. Bishop and Sandra as well as Mary have had some discussions about this. And like I said recently, with two contracts coming up for renewal in two of your local municipalities, the increase is almost 100%. And that's substantial. So yeah, a larger solution here, no doubt, needs to be looked at. But that's what I can offer you at this time to your question, Ward.
Thank you. Okay, further questions or comments? Yep, go ahead, Mayor Santos and then Mayor McDonald.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Warden. And again, you know, clearly, when we identified the regional landfill, you know, back going almost three decades now, the value of working that as a collaborative and regional, that there's no question. And we did all the proper paperwork and got all the proper resolutions from each municipality and created an agreement. We're at a stage here where we're trying to enter a new service into the, you know, taking things away from the landfill. And we're trying to incorporate language now in a motion that is clearly contrary to language and resolutions you receive from municipalities. In one section of the recommendation resolution that's on the table, it speaks to the county receiving the correspondence, you know, and information from each municipality. And then in the second, next paragraph, it says making a statement that's not correct when you look at the resolution from each community. So again, are we sending a mixed message based on, you know, the county table that says all municipalities will? But is that based on correspondence? You're gonna create a little bit more confusion in that language. If you don't recognize based on the tallies, you know, if five are in favor and two have said no at this time, that should be what we should be noting in the resolution, not stating that all will participate. And then solid waste authority receives a letter from the town that says we're not participating. So again, it raises the question of a legal resolution. Not even getting into the jurisdiction matters where the county really doesn't have authority over the municipality's decision at this time until it's uploaded to the county. Maybe that's the question we should be asking, or should we be uploading garbage collections as a regional first and then go from there?
And further questions or comments? Mayor McDonald, sorry.
I just wanted to know if we were going to add the Lake Shore piece to, or the, sorry, the LaSalle piece. Remember that? I'm trying to find it, the addition that they wanted that Mayor DeCarlo was asking about. I don't think we got an answer back from Mayor Bondi as to if he wanted that included. I would like a little bit more clarification on the resolution or the recommendation or the final motion myself, if you don't mind.
No, I don't think that was added, that wasn't added into, it was a suggestion by Mayor DeCarlo at the time. Not to say that that shouldn't be something down the road. Go ahead, Ms. Birch.
Yeah, I believe it was indicated that the CAOs have commenced those discussions, but it wasn't added to this resolution. If that's something that counsel wanted to do, perhaps a second independent resolution to direct the CAOs to undertake that review.
That to me would be a lot cleaner. Okay, any further questions or comments? So Madam Birch, Madam, Ms. Birch, if you could just read the resolution one more time. It's been duly moved and supported.
Okay. So I perhaps don't need to read the first three sections of it that just refer to receiving it. Although we will amend, third one where it refers to the appendices, we'll add the Kingsville Resolution as Appendix I and provide those copies to the Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority. And then, and further, the Essex County Council advised the Essex Winter Solid Waste Authority prior to March 31st, 2022, that all Essex County municipalities will participate in a regional solution for the collection and processing of organic waste material from urban settlement areas at a minimum as part of the short-term processing contract commencing January 1, 2025, or immediately upon the expiration of the municipality's existing waste collection contract, whichever is later.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor? Pose. Motion carries. Okay. 12.71, motion to receive that from Kingsville, Madam Clerk. Yep. Motion to receive. Deputy Mayor Leo Malash, support. Mayor Bondi. Questions or comments? None, none in favor? Pose if any of that's carried. 12.8, the title ownership of mobile high-priority community healthcare clinic. Chief Crowder. Do we still have? Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Warden.
I thought we lost you.
And I am out of town this evening, looking at some interesting equipment for EMS that I will be reporting in the near future. But the report before you is about the, and we made mention of it during our report and delegation with the Windsor Essex OHT. It's to give information on the higher priority community program. And Claudia Dembauer did an excellent job earlier this evening talking about it and the need for a mobile health clinic within the municipalities of Essex County and the city Windsor and the opportunity to obtain a mobile healthcare clinic through provincial funding. Claudia did a lot of this, but within the report it talks of the 1.2 million of high priority community funding from the province of Ontario. And she spoke quite a bit about how the interventions hit hard-hit neighborhoods across our area of Windsor and Essex County. And it's towards the disproportionately impacted by COVID across the region. So the high priority communities were initially based for low COVID testing rates, high positivity rates, socio-demographic barriers. But through our partnerships with the Canadian Mental Health Association under the leadership of Claudia, we found that the funding had a positive impact not only in regards to COVID, but in regards to primary healthcare in very high priority neighborhoods across the area. The strategy included tailored community outreach engagement, increased access to testing, wraparound supports, and case management approach. And we built great relationships. We spoke about those earlier tonight. Strong collaborative efforts have provided testing, vaccination, healthcare supports to our most vulnerable vaccination centers in Kingsville and Leamington, we spoke of that, agri-food facilities, and providing care in congregant care settings and homeless shelters. But the success of this program, we found that we had to be mobile and nimble. We spoke about it earlier, that during the summertime, we set up tents. But as weather cooled and white stuff began to flow, tents just don't work. And it was hard for us to find actual bricks and mortar or more stable type of places to use these nimble and mobile healthcare settings. So we found that through the HPC funding that we did have a surplus or Claudia had a surplus. And with that, to purchase a capital asset in the form of a mobile high-priority community clinic. So the group worked together to source a vehicle. We found one. And it meets the needs of the demographic served and is quoted to be within their approved surplus amount. CMHA follows the same policies and practices for procurement. And the estimated cost of this clinic is roughly around $400,000. All in, that's the purchase, the retrofit, the change, decal, license, the whole nine yards. We, CMHA is determined to do a sole-source procurement based on the availability, the unique configuration, and a specialized piece of equipment. This unit would be staffed by high-priority community members or the OHT clinical partners and provide service throughout the area. The unit will also be a key enabler of the OHT year-one population, which we spoke of earlier. One gap, though, in gaining this is the ownership and ongoing maintenance of the vehicle. Windsor OHT partners have neither the expertise, capacity, or infrastructure to own such an asset. We did some research. We talked to a few of the partners within our communities. And just that, they said they would love to take ownership of it. They just don't have the capacity. Or they just said, we don't have the knowledge or expertise to do it. Within the county, Essex Windsor EMS, we do maintain and service a fleet. This vehicle would fall right in line with our current maintenance programs. As we have experience and we have certified people to drive the vehicle, move it, it would not really be a hindrance. The High Priority Community Program is suggesting the title of the vehicle be in the name of the County of Essex and used for the services provided by high priority communities and/or Windsor Essex OHT. Ongoing costs of maintenance and repairs would be paid for by the county, but invoice to higher priority communities and OHT for reimbursement. Roles and responsibilities, future use and ownership of the asset would be contained within a contract or memorandum of understanding, which I've spoken to Mr. Suddin about, which would be drafted if so approved. Provided that so far, financial implications, though, for full transparency, providing that the memorandum of understanding is in place confirming the financial recovery of the ownership relationship. There's no financial implications to the County of Essex for the ownership, operations, replacements, ongoing maintenance, repairs, storage of this unit. Corporations fleet insurance may give rise to a negative claims history if this unit is involved in a claim. Any insurance claim involving this asset may impact our global fleet renewal rates, but it's expected that we shouldn't be getting into any type of claim. I did consult with the county solicitor, the county clerk, and county treasurer in preparation of this report and recommendation. So the recommendation before you tonight is that Essex County Council approved the clerk and warden to take ownership and title of a mobile high-priority community clinic vehicle to be utilized by the High Priority Community Program or partners of the Windsor Essex OHT. With that, Warden, I'd be glad to take any questions or comments.
All right, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Tracy Bailey and then Deputy Mayor Leo Malash.
Thank you, Warden, for you. Happy to move the recommendation that you have in your agenda tonight. Certainly, this might be my soapbox. This is something that is just so near and dear and passionate to my heart. And as one of your representatives of the largest transportation fleet in this region, I can certainly say that we're more than happy to support it, both at this table and as an organization, et cetera. We just had a huge talk about regional assets, regional thinking, regional approaches, and shared service. And this is one of those glowing examples of what can happen when an OHT of 45 organizations come together. The county plays its part and, you know, takes ownership of this asset, whether temporarily or permanently, and later on could be transferred to the OHT, whatever that's gonna look like in the future. So certainly, this is about increasing access and providing transformational work right here in Windsor Essex County, in all of our areas. It's providing the care that we need in the right place. It's bringing the care to individuals. And it's certainly expanding the work and the work capabilities of all of the organizations. and it's certainly expanding the work and the work capabilities of all of the organizations. So it's very, very needed, it supports regional thinking, um, and this is that out-of-the-box stuff that I'm hoping to see a, a lot more of, uh, at this table, so certainly has my support and happy to move it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Deputy Mayor Bailey. Uh, Deputy Mayor Leo Malas.
Thank you, Warden. Um, looking at, um, at this program as an on, an ongoing program, you know, into future years, uh, does it make sense to maybe, you know, operate it as its own cost center so you, we can identify, you know, the true cost, you know, from year to year over the op, you know, the overall cost of operating that particular piece of equipment? Uh, it's one thing to say, well, I got an invoice, I just pass it along, but we start to understand that if we go, you know, the second and third and fourth year, that we really understand what the cost of that program is because it's really run by someone outside of the county. Um, so I throw that out there as, as maybe running it as a cost, its own separate cost center. The other thing, uh, which comes to mind when you said about we're ownership, but it won't be our employees driving the vehicle, I guess, so I guess we'd have to get some clarification on from a legal perspective of, you know, having the liability issue with someone other than employees driving vehicle, our vehicles. Just, just came to mind as you, as you were commenting about that, that's all, that's all my comments. And I do think, and I do support this, all right?
So through you, uh, Warden, to Deputy Mayor Malas and council, uh, to, to comment on the, on the first point, this is no different than the, uh, community paramedic long-term care funding that we receive by the Ministry of Health where we have to, um, reconcile, log, and account for every dime that's spent. This would be the same type of procedure through financial services and my financial analyst within finance, that any costing that went with this vehicle, whether it be, uh, a quart of oil, two tires, to fuel and maintenance, we would record all the costs of operation, maintenance, storing, um, all of that stuff to report back to O H T and reconcile it, and make sure that every penny that was spent by the county would be recovered back, so it's a zero-cost implication back to the County of Essex. In regards to, uh, the driving of the vehicle, uh, this is the piece that, that makes it very nimble and very mobile. We do have drivers that are licensed as county employees to drive this type of vehicle, so therefore they fall under our insurance. Um, so it'd be a matter of moving it, parking it, and then the clinic staff utilizing it, and when they're finished, we'd bring it back, store it, clean it, make sure everything was good, so that would be County of Essex staff. In the event, and we've done this over the past two years, in the event that we had to have somebody else drive the vehicle that may not be a county employee, uh, we get the information, we get the driver's license abstracts, and we, um, we get them insured while they're driving the vehicle, uh, through financial services. Similarly, when we borrow vehicles from other organizations, same type of thing is we made sure that we had our county employee driver's license abstracts passed over to the organization so that they can make sure that their insurance carrier was aware who was driving it, so it's not that we just picked Bruce Crowder up, not that I want to drive it, but pick him up, throw him in the vehicle. Um, it is all covered through the insurance, uh, coverage.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Just, uh, I guess, uh, where will you store it? Uh, is it going to be at one of our EMS bases or?
So currently, at this point, uh, we are renting storage space due to the pandemic supplies across from our Mercer Station, uh, we address it as Erie Street, it will house it, and as council is aware and approve, we're moving forward with the Kingsville Station. Uh, and it was, not that I designed it for this vehicle, we designed it well before this vehicle, uh, but it will be large enough to handle this vehicle, uh, for storage, then as the future moves, depending who takes ownership of it, ownership of it in future years, uh, but we will have space for it that we don't have to build something brand-new just for the vehicle.
Hey, great. And, uh, I, I don't know, I, that, that's pretty much my, uh, certainly my question. Uh, any further questions or comments? Uh, I'm going to say, okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Bailey moved and, uh, supported by Deputy Mayor Malas, uh, that we proceed, uh, with the title ownership of the mobile high priority community healthcare clinic. All in favor? Pose if any of that's carried.
Thank you.
Another great tool, chief, in terms of, uh, uh, any declared emergencies within our municipalities that would need a mobile, um, unit, I think that's, uh, uh, to, uh, the Deputy Mayor Bailey's comments, uh, another asset, uh, you know, uh, for, for the whole community. Well, thank you for that. Unfinished business, 13.1, um, members of council, the Isolation Recovery Center, I R C, um, as you recall, uh, Mayor McDonald on March 2nd, uh, did have a notice of motion that follows, and, uh, whereas the city Windsor provided notice that as of June 30th, 2022, they will cease being responsible for the operation of the Isolation and Recovery Center, and whereas at least four county municipalities are home to temporary foreign workers, we have resolved that the county council discussed and debate the I R C and which level of government should apply, uh, to the federal government to operate the I R C for the coming year. Well, if we're all in for one or one for all, I think we've had discussions earlier, so, um, I'm gonna, uh, it was your notice of motion, Mayor McDonald, and so I'll, uh, certainly relinquish it forward to you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I've been in several talks, as has Mayor Santos and the Warden, um, with, with the Ministry of Agriculture as well as the City of Windsor and our C A Os as well, and it's very clear the City of Windsor is out at the end of June, and someone needs to, to step up. Uh, the first meeting, I thought it was who, we're waiting to see who blinked first and who was going to commit. Um, I, I don't believe that we have the, uh, luxury of time anymore. Uh, tomorrow, actually, the Minister of Agriculture's meeting with the C A Os again, they want to move quickly on this. It has to be a level of government as municipal, it can't, it can't be the ministry that applies for that funding, it needs to be, uh, either upper tier or lower tier that needs to do it. I, I don't see that we need to wait for a report, I have a report from the City of Windsor that outlines the partnerships, the staffing, all of the funding will come from the federal government, it was approved to the City of Windsor, but since they, they want no part of it, uh, at this point in time anymore, they feel it needs to be, um, taken care of by the, the partners that I guess are benefiting the most, and I, I can't, I can't argue that point. Um, we, we need to move forward on this, they have basically written the manual on guidelines, policies, procedures, and processes, so it isn't like anyone has to reinvent any kind of a wheel, it's just a matter of some oversight from the county. Uh, I really feel that to, to wait for a report on this will put us so far behind the eight ball, unless you, as my, uh, county colleagues, see the continuum of the I R C is not important, the Isolation Recovery Center. From my point of view, I don't believe that we are out of the woods yet, and I think we will see, as they're seeing right now in, um, countries in Europe as well as in China, that there are some surges, and I do believe we will be subject to surges in infection rates that could then impact again our communities that, um, where, where the residents interact with the temporary foreign workers. So I would just really like to see us decide tonight, decide tonight that the County of Essex take this over as applying to be the applicant for the funding and then go from there. Um, I guess that's all I have to say on it, uh, this evening at this point in time.
Any further, uh, discussions or comments? The only thing I want to add, uh, Mayor McDonald as well, is that all the partners, including the I R C center, uh, is available, the, uh, the hotel operator, it would still be in the city of Windsor, hotel operators agreed, you know, to, uh, to maintain, uh, the 110, uh, rooms, uh, to support, uh, the center moving forward beyond, beyond the date, and you're correct, uh, did have an opportunity to speak with, uh, MP, uh, Kursmerzic, and, uh, um, the funding i- is there, and so, and then the partners, like, I know EMS, it's our own, uh, they're still involved, I, I can tell you, uh, the health unit, what they need to do, are still committed, uh, to the center, uh, and all the other partners make sure that they're, they're certainly, uh, fed and taken care of and, and so forth. So, uh, it's just a matter, they need a gatekeeper for the, this, a signatory, so, um, I fully support your, your recommendation. Um, so.
Could I add something? Could I, could I just say too, we are also looking at some long-range plans as well, we're not, we're not just looking short-term, as I said, we don't think this is going to be over this year or maybe even next year, so there, there are partners that are looking at long-term plans, so I just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Yeah, before I go to, uh, our C A O as well, is that, you know, an opportunity to talk with, uh, uh, Minister Thompson as well, is that there, you're absolutely correct, there's, there's other underlying issues that have to be taken care of. The pandemic really opened Pandora's box, uh, when, you know, the recruiters came in and brought in undocumented people and, and so forth. We haven't heard anything in terms of what they've done, is there new legislation? And I think more than anything is there's so many silos at the federal and provincial level, and, and, and for all of us here at the, at the, at the, you know, the ground floor, i- it was frustrating that we didn't know who the go-to person or persons or ministry, uh, really was, and, and so I alluded that to the minister and, uh, and also to the feds that, that so, there's got to be a consensus, uh, to really, um, you know, put some pressure to bear on all of those issues that are still no different today than what they were two years ago. The only, the only saving grace we have is vaccinations and, and, and so forth, so, uh, we need to continue to press, uh, the federal and provincial government in, uh, in, in bringing in new legislation and, uh, and new rules on congregate living, so that, uh, we, uh, you know, to your words, we don't want to be, uh, in the I R C business forever. Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Galloway.
Yes, just, uh, I just wanted to add a few comments and, um, give a little bit of, uh, a, a, a small update at least, um, where this issue no doubt came from, you'll all recognize that around February 15th, 16th, uh, City of Windsor notified, um, all county municipalities as well as the county itself that they didn't want to participate as of July the 1st, um, or continue the service, providing the service. So in the last 30 days, there's been a number of discussions, um, that have led to, um, I think in very short order, potentially a resolution. So what I'm hoping maybe Mayor McDonald would consider, instead of, um, you know, passing some resolution or motion this evening, is that, and I don't feel that, um, some would say time is of the essence on this, but, uh, we have, uh, that, that deadline of June 30th or July 1st, and by the next council meeting, I'm anticipating that there could actually be, uh, some resolution to, uh, the ongoing operation of the I R C. So my request at tonight's meeting would, uh, to be give, to, to give staff the opportunity to further, um, that discussion and report back with a firm, um, recommendation as it relates to who, uh, will continue the operation, who will, uh, be the funding applicant, and any other items that, uh, are going to need to be taken care of as part of, um, potentially the, the ongoing operation of the I R, I R C, so, um, you know, that's just for council's consideration and Mayor McDonald's consideration as it relates to her motion. Um, you know, if you give us another couple of weeks, I believe that the discussions that are being had, uh, um, last week or two, fairly, um, substantially are leading, uh, me to believe that there is actually a solution in the works currently.
Okay, thank you.
Well, am I pleased with that comment? No, I'm not. Um, I spoke to the minister last night, and that certainly wasn't direction I got from her or suggestion from her, neither did I get it from my own C A O. And I, I want to move on this, Mr. Galloway, I, I will not quietly sit back and have us give up on this I R C, I will put that as plain as I possibly can. When the health unit is also suggesting that we need to continue this, it, I'm begrudgingly giving, I will begrudgingly agree to two weeks, but it is certainly not, um, it's not something I'm particularly pleased about, but I, if you can guarantee that there will be something within two weeks, then I'll go with it, but it's, I'm, I'm not pleased with it, no, thanks.
If, if I may, uh, Mayor McDonald, maybe, um, uh, deferral, uh, and, uh, with a full report and recommendation, um, to be brought forward at our next meeting.
As I said, begrudgingly.
Okay.
So that would be April, the, uh, April the 6th is.
Yeah, April 6th.
Yeah, and we, uh, we'd be in a position to provide that, uh, for sure, thank you.
Okay. Moved by, uh, Mayor McDonald and supported by Mayor Bain. Uh, any further questions or comments? We heard none, all in favor? Pose if any, that's, uh, that's unanimous. April 6th. Okay, uh, this, I believe, brings us to, um, that's it, the bylaws, uh, or, I lost my spot, unfinished business? Any further unfinished business? Hearing none, um, any new business? Mayor DeCarlo.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I trust, uh, Mr. Galloway and all the other municipal C A Os to, uh, move on the original waste issue, and I just wanted to, uh, I don't, I don't need a motion or anything, I just wanted to bring it up again, and that, uh, in speaking at a, uh, at an authority level with Ms. Bishop, uh, timing can be critical here, I don't have the expiration dates in front of me, but, um, everyone, uh, will have an opportunity now start thinking about synchronizing all the dates, so if anyone's contracts are coming up, um, you know, they might want to consider that they, they don't want another three- or five-year plan, at least in the short term. Um, but thanks to Mr. Galloway for our comments earlier.
All right, thank you, Mayor DeCarlo. Um, we'll sort of take that under advisement and, um, no long-term contracts, you know, look at one year, and to try to combine all of, all of the contracts. Okay, any further new business? I don't see anyone. Okay, Madam Clerk, uh, adoption of bylaws, please.
Bylaw number 2022-08 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the Corporation of the County of Essex, the Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority, and Christopher Malach Farming Enterprises, Inc., and bylaw number 2022-09 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the meeting of the council of the Corporation of the County of Essex for March 16th, 2022.
Motion on three readings of the bylaws. Uh, Deputy Mayor Rebicki, Mayor McDonald, all in favor? Pose, carried? Any notices of motion? Hearing none, then our evening's work is completed and the German is now in order. Uh, Mayor Santos and Deputy Mayor Borkman, all in favor? Pose if any, that is carried. Thank you very much, members of council, uh, for your indulgence this evening, administration, and those who are watching from the comforts of home, thank you for participating in our meeting, uh, this evening. Uh, again, uh, keep our friends in the Ukraine, uh, you know, in your thoughts and certainly in your prayers, it's, uh, it's a very difficult, uh, situation in Europe and, uh, and also at home, uh, stay safe, be kind, and until we meet again on April 6th, I bid you good night.